We have a quorum. Eric, would you lead us to the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, second. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to turn the meeting over to Wes Lantner.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. How are you doing? Myself and Lori are here together, which is why we have our mask on, so hopefully you can understand me. I did email you the health order from Lori. Our typical planning team worked on this health order along with Pat Henderson, who should be getting on here any second to draft the order. We did have a meeting with B.C. just a little bit ago to present it to them and ask questions. And so they would not be blindsided by it and see it before it was on the newspapers and everything. This order will start tomorrow morning at 12:00 a.m. And it'll last, there is no end date on it, but we're expecting a 14-day quarantine period for the B.C. campus students. This will not include faculty and staff because we expect B.C. to still continue operations and to be able to serve their community there. The order does spell out for students living on campus what they are and are not allowed to do. It also spells out what they are, the off-campus students, what they are and are not allowed to do. If you want, we can put the order up on the screen and everybody can see it. We can go through it. Or we can answer questions.
Your order on the screen.
All right, so the order of quarantine, she is ordering said quarantine today. And this involves all people that were on campus and in person or gathering in person from September and August 19th through September 2nd. Lori has the authorities, the Ashton County Health Order by KSA 65 dash, I can't read the rest of that because there's people's pictures in the way. 65 dash 12, not 129B. So this order will start tomorrow morning, September 3rd at 12:00 a.m. And basically, Ashton County is experiencing an outbreak of COVID associated with Benedictine College. As of September 1st, 2020, there have been 142 confirmed cases on their campus. In addition, the Health Department has identified community spread of COVID-19 from the students that are attending on campus. And there is reason to believe that gathering on campus between August 19th and September 2nd has been exposed to COVID-19, an infectious contagious disease that is potentially life-threatening. This disease may present serious health threat to you or others. A local health officer has determined it's medically necessary and reasonable to prevent or reduce the spread of the disease or outbreak believed that has been caused by exposure to that disease. So, and that paragraph goes into order, the order at 12 o'clock a.m., I'm sorry, I loaded the wrong one, a.m. on September 3rd, so I will change that. For students on campus, you are not there not to leave the campus for any reason except for scheduled or emergency medical appointments unless they have received prior written authorization from the local health officer. You must remain in their dormitory except as further set forth herein. Go ahead. Does someone say something? All right. May have face-to-face contact with cohorts who reside in the same place as you are quarantined. So if you are in your suite on campus or in a dorm room, and there are someone else in there, then those can have face-to-face contact because they are quarantined in the same room. For students residing in Curry, Seberg Hall, Newman Hall, St. Joseph Hall, St. Martin's Memorial Hall, St. Scholastical Hall, and Turner Hall cohorts include those on the same floor because they have communal bathrooms. For the students residing in Elizabeth Hall, Guadalupe Hall, Crimenter Hall, Limkey Hall, McDonald Hall, St. Michael Hall, and Wolf Hall cohorts include those residing in the same apartments or suites. For the students residing in Hartman Schmier, I probably pronounced that wrong. Houses cohorts include those residing in the same house. They may leave their dormitory in cohorts of groups to go pick up meals from the cafeteria on a staggered schedule to be determined by B.C. They are not to have direct contact with anyone outside your cohort group unless you have received prior written authorization from the local health officer to do so. You shall not allow any person to enter the place of quarantine. You should arrange by telephone or email for relatives, friends to assist you with any needs you may have during the period of quarantine. These persons should not have direct contact with the students. If you need assistance providing your daily needs, you should contact the Campus Student Life Center or the local health officer. Now, for students residing off of campus, you shall quarantine in your off-campus dwelling unit. You are not to enter the campus at any time unless you have received prior written authorization to the local health officer to do so. With the exception, they are able to go to the campus health center if they need to be seen there. You do not have, they're not allowed to have direct contact with anyone outside the cohort group unless explicitly authorized by the local health officer. Your cohort group does include those residing in the same dwelling unit. You shall not allow any persons to enter the place of quarantine, so the house they live in off-campus or the apartment. You should arrange by telephone, email for friends or relatives to assist you with anything you need during this time of quarantine since they are not allowed to leave their house. The person should not have direct contact with you if you need assistance. Providing your daily needs, you should contact the campus student life or the local health officer. Section 3, any person who develops symptoms of COVID-19 or who tests positive for COVID-19 shall immediately be isolated from all others except those who have recently tested for COVID-19. The local health officer, the Secretary of Kansas Department of Health and Environment shall be notified and shall exercise and maintain supervision over such cases pursuant to KSA 65-119. Any student residing on campus who tests positive shall remain on campus of B.C. unless they have an alternate plan approved for the local health officer for the secretary. Faculty and staff of B.C. may enter campus to perform essential functions and continue operations of Benedictine College, but such persons shall have no in-person contact with those under quarantine. There shall be no extracurricular activities involving face-to-face contact allowed on campus. This includes sports practices and sports events. Nothing contained herein aggregates the mask mandate from the Kansas Executive Order Number 2052 requiring masks over face coverings in public. This order also supplemented them as modified or modified as required for the effective and efficient management of the control of COVID-19 pandemic in Atchison County by further order or direction of the Ashton County Health Officer. Any person who willfully violates the provision of this order is subject to penalties contained under KSA 65-127 and all other remedies available under law. You object to this order, you may request a hearing with the district court in accordance to KSA 65-129C and KSA 60-1501. You still require to comply with this order until and unless the court rules otherwise. If you're not able to obtain legal counsel, counsel may be appointed to represent you. The court will conduct a hearing within 72 hours of filing a request with this district court unless the local health officer shows extraordinary circumstances require an extension of the time as necessary. So ordered September 2nd, 2nd day of September 2020, and then Lori signed it. Oh, this was not a decision taken lightly to do this. There was lots of communications between lots of different agencies in the medical field, KDHE, Local Health Board, now the commission to move forward with this. We understand that B.C. has worked very, very hard and diligently to stop the spread of COVID-19, but what we're doing is not working, so we are now taking the next step forward to try and stop the spread in our community. Any questions?
Lori, have anything to say?
I just wanted to say that, again, I have children in college, they're freshmen. I didn't take this lightly. I feel like not doing something at this point would make me negligent in the job that I'm hired to do, which is protect the health of this community. And again, I'm not the only one who makes decisions, but I am the one who by law has to sign the order. I wish that there was a better answer, but at this point with the amount of cases that we have and with the community spread, I feel like this is the only stuff that we have really to take to try to help stop the spread and mitigate COVID-19.
Sorry, Jack, it cut out for a second. I, this is incredibly difficult on all of us. I I've been in contact with some other schools and talking with them on some of their mitigation strategies. It is not unique to B.C. that college campuses are seeing a large number of cases. I would like to commend them for the things they are trying to do to mitigate the spread because I do think their strategies will be very important once we come out of this quarantine. And I greatly appreciate all of the work they're doing. I know they're putting in very long hours. And that those things will continue to be important because unfortunately coronavirus isn't going anywhere for a while. We're going to be faced with this for a while. But right now, we're seeing too high of an increase too rapidly. And we have been able to confirm community spread. And that was one of the things that we talked with Altogether as a group last week, that our goal was to prevent that. And once we saw that, that we were too late, and we have seen that, and that's part of what is prompting this in addition to the numbers. And our commitment is to try to help our community as a whole as well as B.C., and that is what makes this such a difficult thing to do.
I have a question. Who's going to enforce this? Oh, okay.
Pat Henderson, do you have anything to say?
Well, I mean, it's it's just like any other law who gets enforced by reports of violations. And, you know, we're dealing with a group, I think, that is likely to be compliant and to try to be good citizens. And we'll just have to see how that goes. And if there are problems, we'll need to talk about how to address them.
Can I ask your question, Eric?
Not, not really. I mean, you have, I just, is this, does Benedictine have someone that's basically patrolling or looking or reporting? Or is that for local law enforcement? I mean, I just don't see how the implementation of this is because kids are going to be kids. And I was just curious, who's going to enforce it?
Yeah. Well, I mean, you're right about that. So ultimately, a case gets filed in district court, like on a traffic ticket or something like that. It isn't, it wouldn't be a ticket given to them. It would be the filing of a complaint, but it would be that same sort of process as if somebody gets a speeding ticket.
Anybody from Benedictine College?
Yeah, thanks, Jack. This is Steve Menace. Appreciate it. So, I mean, as you can all imagine, we vehemently object to this for a number of reasons. Well, first off, I'm not sure I, even though I'm a lawyer, I don't, this is not been an area I had practiced in, but, you know, this is a pretty draconian order here that was taken, is being taken up. We didn't receive any formal notice that this type of an action would have been taken up today against the college. So I'm a little, I guess, we were surprised when we found out this afternoon that this was, that this meeting was being held and it was going to impact the college. You know, we've been really working hard since August the 8th is when upper-class athletes came back. We, as you know, tested everybody the day they came back. We've been dealing with, we actually found asymptomatic students on our campus that had COVID that we were able to isolate as soon as we found out that they had them, but there was some spread. But over time, you know, people have been released. We have, even though I think the order indicates there's 100 and some case, total case, 142 confirmed cases, there's only 39 active cases. So out of 2,000 students, 2,500 total people in our community, there's 39 active cases. So when we talk about spread right now, as far as we know, those are the ones that could be spread. Anytime someone has, is found to have an active case, we, of course, isolate them. Some of them are being isolated in the quality end, but most of them have been sent home. And so they're isolated in their homes. And, you know, upon further discussion, we actually modified our mitigation program last Friday, you know, asking for allowing us to strengthen our mitigation program after Lori and the team expressed some concern. So we now quarantine everybody within a household, so it's not just their, not just their roommate, but anybody that's within a household, whether it's a suite or a household or a row house. All of them are automatically quarantined now. In addition to that, we have a grab-and-go out of our cafeteria, which we think will mitigate spread as well. We just implemented that, all of that, beginning on Saturday. We knew that it would take some time for those new mitigation programs. We did a number of other things, including additional mask requirements, et cetera. We knew those things would take time for them to be beneficial. And I, I mean, we haven't even seen whether those new mitigation plans are going to be beneficial as well. We're, I think we're a little concerned too about the authority, the broad authority to quarantine an entire campus. We've seen at other schools quarantining different sections such as a fraternity or something like that, but not the entire campus. We're also a little, I guess, just not understanding the, I guess, maybe there is power to do this, but the power to quarantine a house off, that is in, off-campus of the residents of which, who are not positive or even in quarantine. And basically, you know, they're adults, they've negotiated a rental agreement with the landlord, and now they're living in that house, and now we're telling them they can't leave that house, even though they're not, they haven't tested positive or they're not quarantined, but they're, now they're under this quarantine order. That seems overreaching to me. I will also tell you, folks, I mean, we're going to have, we will have in Atchison really true mental health and suicide problems. If we tell these kids they have to stay in their dorm, in their room for 14 days, and they're only allowed out three times a day to walk over to the dining hall to get their food to go back into the room. 25% of all college-age students have thought about suicide in the last 30 days. And that's not Benedictine students, that's across the country. In fact, if teen suicide goes up 1%, that will equal the number of COVID deaths in this country. This is going to be a very, 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 very serious problem if this happens. Our kids already, given the mask, given the limited amount of time that they're out on campus, are already having mental health problems. There's already lines out the door to our mental health. So we don't, we don't have the capacity to handle the mental health problems that we will have. We already have suicide ideations already among some of our students on our campus. That is just going to exponentially get higher if this order goes into place. In addition to that, this order does not address and does not appear to allow our students to go to mass. You know, it indicates that you are not to leave your quarantine except for those things set out below. The only thing set out below is that you can leave to go get your grab-and-go meal at the dining hall, and that's it. So I think that there, this order has a real First Amendment problem because it does not specifically allow our students to go to mass, even though there's a lot of mitigation programs in place in church. I think that we're going to run into a ton of issues. You know, we have, we have certain things on our campus that creates discipline and a program in place such as athletic practices. And you take that away, and who knows what happens to these guys? Right now, all of these guys that are practicing have incentives to do the right thing, to social distance and to wear their masks and not not contract COVID, because if that happens, they'll have to quarantine or isolate for 14 days. You take that away from them, I don't know what's going to happen. In addition to that, this appears to say that once this order goes into place, you have to stay in your dorm. And you're not even allowed to drive home. That, it appears that if you, if you're from Kansas City, for example, and they say, okay, you're stuck in your dorm for 14 well, that's a misdemeanor, right, under this order. I think the order is very, very overreaching. I don't think that this order allows us to do the things that we had promised to do and we strengthened our mitigation program starting on Saturday. And I think that we should be allowed to see if those mitigation plans work or not. We won't know that until, you know, probably, well, later this week or early next week, if those things are going to work or not. So I think the order is, I think the order is very broad, and I think it's actually extremely damaging. I think it's also damaging to the city, honestly, okay? There's, I know that there's been statements made that there's spread out there, but you're basically taking away our students from, from the community, from restaurants, from different things on our, in the city and the county that's really, really going to harm them. In addition to that, I mean, this is so strict, strict. Like I said, not only can they not go home, they can't even get in the car and drive to Kansas City for dinner or anything. I mean, they are like literally stuck in their dorm and in their house. I mean, literally, these are adults that have rented a house in Atchison, and this order is requiring them, even without any information whether they're sick or not, they have an order that they have to stay in their house. That's no different than if they issued an order and said, okay, you know, Mr. and Mrs. Smith and their five kids, you're part of a group that we think has a possibility of spread of COVID because you belong to some church or some organization. So you're going to be, you have to stick in your house just because you happen to belong to an organization or a group that we think, you know, can cause COVID spread. I think it's very overreaching. I think it's very broad. I'm not sure it could even stand up in court. And so I, we really object to this. And I think that not only is it overreaching, I really think that we believe that it's not needed at this time. And I just think it's going to be devastating to the college. I mean, it really is.
Okay, anybody from the public? Mike Callum, if you want to. Can I unmute yourself, Mike?
Can you hear me now? Here's my concern. And first, let me be clear, I'm here only as an individual citizen. I do not represent anyone affected by the order, and I do not represent Benedictine College as a lawyer. I just want to be clear about that. I'm here only in my individual capacity. But here are my concerns. First of all, this order is deficient in many respects. It affects about 2,000 people. Pat, every one of those people is entitled to legal counsel. Their hearings have to occur within 72 hours if they seek one. Each one of these individuals affected gets to make that decision on their own. The college can't make it for them, you can't make it for them. But anyone who is quarantined by this order is entitled to a hearing in the district court within 72 hours, and they have to have legal counsel appointed for them. So hopefully the county has budgeted for that because you have to pay for every single lawyer for any of these adults that choose to challenge this. Number two, this order is deficient because it doesn't advise the people quarantined that it would be illegal for their employers, if they are employed. It would be illegal for their employers to terminate their employment based on this quarantine. You didn't advise with that. This order is deficient. It has to advise with that. You cannot take away the civil liberties of a group of people based on an organization that they belong to, folks. This is wrong. It's unconstitutional. It will never stand. And I can tell you as a principled constitutional observing citizen, I won't stand by and watch this. And again, I'm speaking only as an individual. I do not speak for the college or anyone else. I am disturbed by this order. I will speak to you as the chair of the Kansas Republican Party. I can tell you that the party would not stand for an order like this. We are against these kinds of wide-reaching mandates that are unconstitutional. So with all that said, I think you better be careful before you implement this because it will be challenged. I will challenge it personally. I know that the Republican Party will challenge this. And regardless of what the college does, these adults that are affected by it have rights. They get to decide what they're going to do. I think you better rethink this order. All right? Thank you.
Anybody to the Health Department?
I would just like to address a couple of things, just in what led up to this process for those who are not already aware of it. We, over the last week or so, have been in communication with the college. They've invited us to be part of their briefings that they're doing for COVID that happen three times a week in the morning. And I have been able to attend each one of those since that invitation was extended and have appreciated that they have been working to track their numbers and send them to us. We did have an extensive conversation last Thursday evening between several members from the college as well as Lori and myself as Wes was unavailable, just to go over numbers and explain numbers and why they matter. And we expressed concern at that point for rapidly rising numbers. And even advised a voluntary quarantine at that point. It was not something we said was an order at that point, but that was, in our opinion, that was a warning that this was something we were concerned that may need to move forward if the numbers continued to rise. So when we, later on, after they had had some time to discuss that, when they moved forward with their mitigation strategies, which, again, I would like to say, I do think those will be effective strategies once we come out of this quarantine, but I do not think they're sufficient now. They advised us of that on Friday morning. I highly recommended that they continue working toward planning for if there were to be a mass quarantine needed. And that was at the end of last week. So there was warning given that that was a concern. So there was warning given that that was a concern on our part. And Mr. Cuckelman, I, I appreciate some advice as far as areas that may be deficient. I'm not a lawyer. I will leave that to Pat if we need to make any adjustments as far as making sure people know that they cannot be fired for an order such as this. But I don't understand the legal side of things because I have no background in that. But my understanding of the authority for a local health officer in a pandemic is that her job is to do what is necessary to mitigate the spread. And I do agree that the, the way I read the laws, they were never really designed well for this type of situation. A pandemic has not happened in a very long time since these laws have been written. And I do expect that those laws will probably be rewritten after this gets through with our next legislative session, in fact. But right now, we are operating under the best of our understanding of what is currently written. And to be honest, we're learning a little bit as we go and trying to seek counsel legally as we see appropriate. So, and as far as can't legislate away the constitution, I'm not trying to legislate away the constitution, Mr. Cuckelman, what I mean as far as the local health officer's authority. If that clarifies what I am saying, thank you for your comment. But this is a difficult time and we all, we all recognize that. And are, are trying to do the best we can for our community and our citizens, including the college.
And I would just like to say, as the health officer and what I have been hired to do and what the statutes read right now, for me not to act on this, I would be negligent and I would not be performing my job the way that I should be.
And BC knew from beginning with all of this, that there was, I, I heard Dr. President Menace say 100 times, well, hopefully we get to come back in the fall. Hopefully we get to come back in the fall. And we, we've been over backwards with BC to help make them. We're not condemning BC at this point. We're just saying what we're trying is not working. So we're going to have to take further steps to fix the solution. Because Atchison County, we went from four cases two weeks ago when we are 200 and...
I haven't released it publicly, but...
A much, much larger number in a matter of two weeks. And yes, we had people come here with, with the case and bring it to our community. And those people should have quarantined on campus 14 days prior to school starting, which we discussed with BC and BC wanted them to quarantine at home. I can guarantee you that most of those students did not quarantine at home before they came here. Or we wouldn't have seen the numbers that we've seen now. So they've come here now and now we get to deal with it as a community. We have lots of people in this community that are very nervous about BC and about the students being here and about them spreading that to, to our community, which was at 64 two weeks ago. So these are the steps we've taken to move forward. I am also not a lawyer, but we have to try and do something to stop the spread.
I, I have a question. The, Mr. Menace said that there was 39, I believe, active cases. What are the rest of them classified as? Are they recovered?
You can't, you cannot classify them as recovered because that is a relative term. We've had people who have had complications months after being released. So basically what that means is they've been released from their, their isolation. However, we're having numbers every day come in and from BC and our community now.
You would have, say, a hundred or so that would not be contagious. Right. A hundred plus of the 142 wouldn't be contagious.
That's not a correct statement.
That's not, that's not a correct statement.
Well, if you've only got so many active cases and the rest are recovered?
They've been released, I guess, yeah.
They're not recovered. They've been released. And like I, I said, we've had cases that have been positive, been released, got sick again, tested again in three months, four months, six months, and they're positive again. And it's not with the first virus. It's a mutated version of the virus.
So they could be recatching it from someone else?
Correct.
Okay.
And we also have a large number of students that have been exposed that are on quarantine that haven't started to show symptoms yet. We also have a large number of students that have been tested that have, the results have not been coming yet.
Right. So just so Eric, just so you know the, the numbers. So we've had, we have 39, I'm just talking about students now, 39 active cases. 87 have been released. So these are folks that tested positive. They were put in isolation and then the county or the state released them from that isolation. When is, when a person becomes positive, then contact tracing goes into effect. We actually expanded the contact tracing. So anybody that lived with them in their household, whether it's a suite or their, or their roommate, then we automatically quarantine them for 14 days. Most, any, anybody that tested positive is in isolation, meaning not by themselves. Most of them went home. Some of them went to the Holiday Inn and they isolated there for usually 10 to 14 days in that timeframe. The, the, the county and the state kind of makes that decision on when they release them, if they tested positive. Those that have, that have are considered exposed, but not haven't necessarily tested positive, they go into quarantine and they usually quarantine for 14 days. And we've expanded actually the definition of quarantine. So we catch even more people than would normally have been quarantined. But we just want to be overly cautious about that. There's currently about 130, 132 in quarantine right now. So, and they're quarantining on our campus in their dorm room. So total, we have less than three, about, about 2.3% of our, of our community is active, have, is active. And that's including, that's even including the pending ones. We have some that have tested. We have not received their results yet. So we have some, some results to get back, but we're about 2.3% right now of the entire community is actively positive. But I wouldn't even say active because anytime somebody tests positive, they are immediately, immediately isolated. In fact, I think when they, when they get symptoms and they go to get tested, we isolate them until their test results come back or quarantine them until test results come back.
Mr. Menace, did you say you implemented some new policies Saturday?
So, right, yeah. So on Friday, after discussions with the county health group, we implemented new policies. This is, a part of the new policy was to expand quarantine group so that we could, we would define that more broadly. So as an example, Eric, we would have, let's say you had a, a McDonald Hall has a suite of eight girls in it. Okay. If one tested positive, what we would typically do is do contact tracing and usually her roommate would then have to quarantine. Okay. The, the positive person would be taken out of that room, isolated, and then we would quarantine her. But what we decided to do is define the quarantine group as a larger group just to be more safe. So all seven girls, then remaining girls would quarantine. And so we defined households much broadly so we could catch possible exposure more. In addition to that, we went to a complete grab and go in our dining hall. So now students cannot go in and eat in the dining hall. They have to go get their food, take it out. Most of them go back to their room. Some of them eat outside. And so, and then we expanded our mask wearing requirements on our campus. And so anytime you're, anytime you're not alone outside, you have to wear a mask. And so that, that expanded that. Linda, any other expansions there?
Before you go on, there's my... Now I'll call on Linda if she would like to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I just want to, I just want to, I just want to make one comment. You understand, the county commission does not do this health stuff by the county health officer. So it's, we do not have the authority to override health officers. But, so what we're mainly here for is information and probably to try to get the support of the county commission for the order. I've heard a lot of things going on the last couple of weeks, Steve, and, and there's no doubt about intentions. But I also know college gets, we're like courting cats.
Right.
And, and, and you know, you and I had these terrible conversations over the summer of how I felt that you really were up for a challenge. And now this challenge has become a great opportunity. Anyway, Linda, you want to add something?
Yeah. Jack, we, we've been working with the county and the hospital and everyone all through the mitigation the task force has, and they've been great to work with. You know, we've, we've implemented everything. So when Friday, we decided, okay, we have to go stronger because we don't want to quarantine, you know, in, in place. So one of the things I think that we took the most heat on is we were very direct with our students. And Steve went on and did a video to all, all students telling them this is really serious. We implemented all kinds of sanctions for if you're not wearing masks. We did all the things that President Menace had just said. But I think we, we took an approach of, come on, we all have to be in this together. And, and I, I just wanted to speak just a little bit to the mental health issues. I have a girl in isolation over at the hospital that her dad flew here from Arizona to get her to stay up in Troy for her last part of her isolation because she was struggling. And, and that's just one example. I was up at the health center when Wes called me and we've had 100 cases, 100 appointments in two weeks. That's what Grace, my counseling director, told me, of mental health cases. And so it's really a hard time transitioning to college the first two weeks. My only other comment is we've worked really hard and I think, you know, it, it's been really difficult, you know, with all the testing and kids going up to St. Joe and kids going to Leavenworth, you know, to test. But I'm concerned mostly about the college, the health of the college. You know, we're before our 20th day and I'm really concerned that parents are going to say, this isn't going to work. We're going home before the, getting, still get a refund before the 20th day. And so my concern is, on Friday, we had no, no community spread at all. And so that's why we implemented everything. So I don't know how much community spread we have because our numbers went down over the weekend. I only had, I had five or six negatives and one person test positive. Today, I think there was four positives. Yesterday, there was four or five positives. So I was thinking, okay, we're going to make it. We're going to make it. We're going to get this. And then today I got the phone call. But I'm kind of really worried about the timing of this with our freshmen in particular that haven't gotten to know us real well. You know, they might be scared that this is, you know, the college is going to quit. And then it's going to really impact the col, the college and the community. And anyway, my concern is for the health of the college. And, and I think our students, you know, we've made it through. I mean, we've, we've put our process in place and taken care of our students. And like I say, Friday, there was zero community spread. We asked. So I, my biggest concern is, is how it's going to affect the community if the college does lose 100 kids or 200 kids. So that's just, that's where my heart is. Like, I grew up in the community. So I love Atchison. I love Benedictine. I've been here my whole life. I just don't want to see either one of them suffer. So anyway, that's just my only comments. So.
Well, I will tell you, everybody's heart. But it also has to do with our citizens. And, you know, I went to St. Benedict's for a prayer institution, St. Benedict. So I've had some experience with that. My wife was a first graduate of college, alphabetically. So we have a lot of, a lot of family. I, my, my two daughters. My two sons chose to do Jesuits, but so I can't stop that. Anyway, I'm a little bit lost in what's said because I don't feel like, one, our numbers are not driving, and two, I get the feeling the health department doesn't really feel that they're honest working together. And that's what I'm hearing. I, I wish there was a solution. I could, I can't issue a health law. I could support a health, and it's unlikely that I, that's a part of the health order because I've got a process. But I will tell you that if there's a solution, I'd like to hear it. I mean, and I don't know if you can give us a solution right now. If Bonnie is another solution, Leslie, Lori's a solution. Something we're going to do is get our numbers together. I got a doctor, I got a health professional, I got a emergency manager telling us this is a bad thing. So, okay, Bonnie, you want to say something?
Yeah, one, I want to clarify maybe an impression you have. We don't feel that BC has not been trying to work with us. We actually feel very well that they have been doing a lot. We couldn't have been able to contain what we've contained without their help. We have been on several phone conversations, phone with Linda and, and group conversations amongst all of us. And they told us recently what they plan to do for athletics and I was very impressed with their plan for spectators events for athletics. I don't want that message sent that we don't think that they've been working well with us because that is not what we think. We, the reason that we think this is necessary is because we do think that they're doing everything they can and unfortunately, it's not enough. So I, I want to clarify that that is not our opinion. The other thing I wanted to clarify, and I know that this is confusing, but the way we calculate numbers, and this is by how nationally they're calculating numbers and how the state is calculating numbers, is we look at positive tests versus total tests. And this has been a really hard thing for us to track because we know a lot of people are going to urgent care centers to be tested and things like that. And we are not getting all of those total negative tests. But I started tracking, trying to keep the best record I could of our tests. And they did 1,723 tests through their baseline testing. And I include that number. And then the best number I can do is include the tests that are done here at the hospital because our, our internal hospital infection control nurse has tracked any case that is a BC student or staff member and has kept that for me. And of that best calculation that I can get based off of my numbers, the positive test rate has been at 8%. Again, that is not the active, as Dr., or sorry, President Menace mentioned earlier, but that is the test rate positive since the beginning of this, first tested on August 8th. We have seen a higher percentage of those tests clearly in the last couple of weeks. And I apologize, I unfortunately didn't start keeping that tracking until the 27th. But the, the rate of testing positive has gone up significantly since then. And that's part of what is concerning is that to the number of tests we're doing, we're getting a higher percentage of them positive. Even said by your provider at the student health center there at BC, she noticed just in her, her comments today when she walked by my office, was that 40% of the tests that she ran yesterday were positive. 40%. That's a high percentage. And she's testing symptomatic kids every day. So I, numbers are numbers and they're, they're able to be looked at by a zillion different people and everyone understands them a little different based off of your perspective. But I wanted to try to relate that to what the state is tracking. But I wanted to try to relate that to what the state is tracking numbers wise as best I could because we can't count the whole BC community. We can't count all the faculty and staff that were not tested or the students that opted out of testing because there was a subset of students that opted out of testing. And some of those tests were people that have been tested more than one time. So you really have to do as best you can by your total test number, not your community percentage. And again, more important than anything is not that we think BC is not working with us. I can't emphasize that enough.
This body, I really didn't mean. I think a lot of people have expressed that maybe their students are. As a joke with the, with the try to accomplish. I don't want to give a long conversation. Does anybody have anything else to say?
I'd like to share a perspective. This is Tom Hoops. I work as the Vice President of College Relations at the college. And I used to be the editor of the National Catholic Register and I can guarantee you that if you tell a thousand plus people that they can't go to mass anymore, which is what this order tells them, that's going to be a national story. That's going to be a story that's on, that's on all the national media. If you tell them further that the reason they can't is because we have 39 active cases, but we're counting all the ones that are in the past also, that's not going to be well understood. I, I appreciate everything that we've heard about how much we've worked with the county on this. And I would just say, you know, it's true, we're working with the county, things are going actually pretty well. You know, the old saying is sometimes the, the cure is worse than, worse than the disease. If we try to lock down our students, we're going to have mental health problems. We're already trying to figure out a communications plan and you all are going to have to figure out a communications plan for how to announce that, that our students are committing suicide because of what they, what they're facing. We already have suicidal ideation. Our college population is no different than the national population. We have the same percentage of people who are worried, who are, who are scared. And we're going to scare them even more, especially when we tell them that they can't go to mass and can't go to confession. I, I think this is a really, really difficult thing for us to deal with from a communication standpoint. From how do we explain to people why we did what we did, when we knew what we knew?
I think we should address the church situation. In our order.
I don't know.
I didn't hear you, what'd you say again?
I think we should address the church situation.
So.
I think we should, I, I really believe that if we gave this order another couple of days, so tonight at midnight, two days from that, from now at midnight, if I give some chance for you to get some input from yourselves, of what you heard this evening.
Just my opinion. I, I would have a change myself. And that is to, there's no end date on this, except to say that it would be until vacated by the health officer or ordered by the, of the court. Does that mean three weeks, four weeks, six months? I mean, all other health orders have had a two week sunset and then we had to reissue that. And this one does not. I think that that is a problem.
So with the, with the church discussion, we talked to President Menace about that earlier. We didn't say they couldn't go to church. Maybe we need to reword in that order that they can go to church. We did not touch liturgical or any religious gatherings at all. And does not say you cannot go to religious gatherings in the order. And President Menace specifically asked that question, can they go to church? And we said, yes, you can still go to church as long as you're social distancing, wearing a mask. With the order, there's no end date. It was discussed to revisit at the 14 day mark to make sure this was working. Pat, do you want to comment on that? That was a discussion that we had while writing the order.
Well, I think that comes directly from the statute that 30 days is the, is the most that it can go without being reissued. But by statute, it's to go until, until, as long as necessary. And, and until withdrawn by the local health official.
Steve, for all these, or Linda, maybe this is a better question for you. Are these people on 14, their living unit or they have suffered just for 14?
They, they stay in their living unit because the living unit in essence is blocked off from everybody else, so.
So would it be advisable to take all these students?
Linda, you're muted.
I said, I'm sorry, Jack, I didn't hear your question, your last.
I was talking about is there, can we, can all the students go under one dormitory? Because when you say living unit, it gets really pushy.
No, they've all, they've all been identified. They've all been identified in our new mitigation strategies, what a living unit is. Maybe it's an apartment, maybe it's a suite. The roommates in the community bathrooms, you know, they're, those all have been identified. When there's a positive case, they're removed and their suite mates or their roommates, their households, we're calling them, are the ones that are quarantined in their room. We are, I didn't mention this, we have one of our largest enrollments this year. So I just had a report today from my Director of Residents Life. We are over 15, 1,554 students, so we're 13 students over in our residents halls. So we are packed in. So that's why Bill's been so wonderful at the Quality Inn and we've had a really nice relationship. I just got a letter from, or an email from him today complimenting our students on their behavior and the staff. And we isolate over there if they can't go home. And they, and I check every single one of them in, or Lory, or Grady, or Jan, Adrian, and they couldn't be nicer to us. And so our students aren't allowed to leave the room. Like I say, I have had to have helped one student with a mental health issue this week. But it's, it's pretty hard for them to be over there anyway, but we're doing it, we're making it. And like I say, the 39 active cases, we were excited about that truthfully this morning at our COVID meeting because they were going down, the numbers were going down. So anyway, that's why it's kind of a little bit of a shock to us right now.
Linda, can I go back to Eric, no, his question, who's enforcing the quarantine?
Who's enforcing the quarantine? We just call them and I guess the colleges. Megan, our contact tracer is still contacting our positive cases and, and contacting students that are exposed. We're just adding an extra layer as President Menace has explained, okay, for our BC. So literally a student, I just had this conversation today. A student that was isolated at home is coming back to campus because he is released after 10 days. And we're asking him to continue his quarant, just quarantining with his household for another four days because we feel it's so important for that community. So he's not going in and out and the people that truthfully are quarantined because of him are not still in quarantine. So I just had that conversation with two students today, truthfully. And so we're kind of going over and above to try to help the situation. So like I say, we took a beating this weekend on all of our different mitigation strategies and gotten lots and lots of angry people. But, but we wanted to do it to help the county and help the city and anything we could do. So anyway, that's, that's kind of how we're operating as far as, but it's been manageable so far. So anyway, that's, that's the best I can do.
Is your calling on something?
Yeah, Linda, you know, we've discussed a lot of things here this, this evening. If we're having issues with kids with mental, why don't we offer their tuition back so they can go home, get their mind straight and then come back maybe second semester?
Yeah, well, and Bill, a lot of, I mean, they say one out of every four college students now deal with anxiety. That's nationwide. It's increased over 10% in just the last few years. So a lot of our students will have anxiety and, and there are some suicidal ideation. That's just our population of 18 to 21 year olds. It's across the country, you know? We serve them, we have a great counseling center. I mean, I have a wonderful counseling center. I can't say enough for the quality of counseling, free counseling we give to our students on campus. We've got right now, I took up six mass, so six counselors that are in our counseling center working, serving our students, helping them get through. So, so, so truthfully, Bill, they're great members of our community that just struggle, struggle with anxiety and some suicidal ideation, we help them through, so.
I think, I think, I think you sidestepped my question. My question was, if they're having that much problem, has there ever been any of them offered their tuition back?
Well, right now, yeah. Well, Bill, right now, the ADA includes mental health issues as a disability. You know, you can't, you can't deny someone to come to college if they're having any kind of issues. Or I can, Derek can speak to this probably better, but I can't send someone home because maybe they're dealing with a mental health issue or anything, so.
I didn't say, I didn't say send them home, I said, give them the option.
Well, they want to be here, they want to be Ravens and they, they don't, they don't want to go home. And, and so, and I want them there, truthfully, I want them here because they're just dealing with a disease and we're helping them through it, just like we'd help any of our students that are dealing with different illnesses.
And Bill, frankly, I mean, between now and September 15th, they can go home and get, and not pay any tuition anyway. So, so they have that right to do that as well.
So, you know, I'm a boomer, so I go way back. When I was in college, final hall and pressure. Why the druggers didn't write a bed check, make sure they were there? Have you ever, if you're really going to keep the quarantine service, should you be doing some checking on the students?
Yeah, that's going to be difficult. My first year as a hall director in 83, I had a curfew, I had bed checks, I had to do bed checks. You'd bed check them at midnight and better go back and check them about 12:30 because you're not sure. If they're going to want to get out, they're going to get out. And so, but we'll do every, you know, we'll do our due diligence, but I'm more worried about wanting to go home and, and not, not quarantine on campus, so.
I, I realize at the end of the day, you're still operating a mission, but it has to be equitable. And I'm sure you've been, I'm, I gotta believe that's one of your priorities. It would be one of my favorites. So there's a health order on the table, it starts at 12 o'clock tonight. You know, Wes, you got any more comments?
I would like, yes, I would like to make a couple of more comments. Mental health is a huge issue. We've discussed that daily on our local health department calls and it's not just with college kids, it's with everybody. Drug abuse is crazy high right now and they're actually starting a task force to try to mitigate that. I think the COVID has everybody, I think it has everybody stressed and under tremendous pressure. So I'm not trying to, I, I just want you to know that it's not just your college students that are having mental issues with everything that's going on and that everything that they're dealing with. It's, it's worldwide and I, the United States is, is no exception. It's, it's really bad right now.
No, I, I think I'm having a couple of issues. Just so y'all know. We can all laugh at this, but I would love to see us have a couple day large orion on this order just to say, and I don't have the authority, so just understand, I do not have the authority to do this. But a couple of days, maybe we'll all have a chance to see, you know, the health department wants it to be stricter. The college thinks it's too strict. Some people think it's unconstitutional. I'm not, I'm not trying to say who's right or who's wrong. But you want to have a, there's something like a couple of days, really.
I, I have a question. Lori or Bonnie, did you know about the new practices put in by Benedictine on Saturday? And was that considered not enough?
Actually, when we talked to Benedictine, I don't remember what day it was, Bonnie and I were on the call. We actually highly recommended that they quarantine for 14 days. I was asked by President Menace, is this a order or is this a recommendation? And I said, it's highly recommended, I do not want to have to do an order.
At, at that point, you had made, kind of made up your mind already that it was going to be.
No, sir.
Implemented at that level because, I mean, you didn't take into consideration what he was going to put in the next day?
Absolutely did take that into consideration. Bonnie and I.
But that wasn't enough?
I'm sorry?
That wouldn't, that wasn't enough?
Once we started having community spread and the numbers, saw the numbers going up. We tried to do, we tried to give them a chance. Here's the thing, you're, you're on a time schedule here. You, in two days, there could be 50 more, 100 more people infected. So we highly recommended that they do this before. They decided not to, they did implement some things to try to help, but we're still seeing the numbers and it's a 14 day incubation period. So we all decided that that is the best thing to do at this point in time to mitigate this spread. Is to quarantine where the cases are. We don't want to quarantine the whole county. I mean, we can't, the governor quarantined this whole county for two weeks and we had, what, 10 cases? We have 100 and, I don't know. 132 just on campus and I'm asking, we're asking for a 14 day quarantine to get this under control. And we asked for it, I didn't, was it a week ago, Bonnie?
It was Thursday night.
Yeah, last Thursday.
Yeah.
And we asked for it before school started. Back in July, we said, bring those kids here, let's quarantine them and force them to quarantine before school starts. That way we won't have all this problem. So we, so the decision was to make them quarantine at home and I guarantee you, none of them did that or we wouldn't be in this situation now. I mean, BC cannot prove that those kids quarantined for 14 days before they came here. So we're asking for a quarantine, we're trying to work with you, we're trying to fix this problem before we spread it to a huge number of our community and people start to die. Right now, we are lucky, I feel horrible for the family that has lost their, the one person that has died. But right now, we have one. In a matter of weeks or even a month, we could have a bunch. And I would be very angry if one of my family members passed away and they got traced back to BC.
And I would be negligent.
Jack, I often ask myself, how, how did we get here, right? You know, back in March, the mantra was, let's flatten the curve. And the curve was flattened, we all kind of hunkered down and the curve was flattened. I think the curve is still flat, I, I don't know. You, I'm, I'm assuming there's empty beds in the Atchison Hospital. Then the goalposts were moved after the curve was flattened to, let's protect those most vulnerable. And, and mitigation strategies were put into place in the United States to do that. Then the goalposts were removed again and I'm not even sure I know what the goalposts are anymore. I, I don't, and I, is it as low as possible until we get a vaccine? But our kids are not, I think out of all tested positive, only two have gone to the hospital. One did not spend the night and one may have spent the night, is that right?
Last night, I'm not sure when he got out, they had a student last night.
Yeah, but of all those, only two have gone to the hospital. Most symptoms for 18 to 24 year olds have been intermittent headaches, I can't smell or taste. And that lasts, you know, a few days, some have been, some have. And that lasts, you know, a few days. Some have been, some have been short of breath, and that's, that's it. But, but, you know, our, our kids are just frustrating, I think, for us.
It's frustrating for me as well, and I can tell you that maybe only two of your kids have been in the hospital, but we've had local community members in the hospital. Very young community members in the hospital, sick with COVID.
And, and I, and you guys have a job to do. I mean, the county health, I really respect. I mean, your job is, is to take care of this. You're, in, in your, in your position, the numbers doubled in a couple of weeks, and you're sitting here, oh my gosh, I've got a job to do, and it doesn't look like I'm doing my job. But, but ultimately, we have to look at the bigger picture here, and this is not. I, I, I mean, again, the goalposts continue to change. I don't know what the, what the goal is here. And, and we're getting the, the brunt of this, and it's not, it's not an impact on our campus.
And look at Steve. I know that with this order issue, some people are going to be really bad at this. I also know some people are going to be really happy.
Sure, right.
You know, it's a, it's a challenge, so. You always want to try to make as many people happy as possible. You know, I like to say that I'm not a politician. I'm a public servant, so I do the right thing, so. I think the idea of a quarantine is not off-base. But the way it maybe is ordered in this health order, maybe it could be soft a little bit, but I'm not, I can't tell the health department how to do their job, so. I only commented that maybe we give it a couple of days before we issue, and maybe there could be a little bit more conversation.
And I, we can still have conversation. And we can have conversations daily, but I, I want to issue the order because if I do not, I feel like two days is a lot of time. And it's a whole lot of time. We can talk about the order. We can make changes as need be. Like I said, I didn't just wake up this morning and say, I think I'm going to have to quarantine B C. There's a lot of medical advice that went into this decision, not just mine. I have to sign the paper, but it's not just me.
But, I mean, and I appreciate that too, Laurie, and but, Jack, I mean, it's a quarter to seven right now. We found out about this order at 4:30, 4:40 today, and we have to basically figure out how we're going to tell the entire community on campus and off campus that they're not allowed to leave their, their residence tomorrow, starting tomorrow. And no practices starting tomorrow. You can, how are we going to do breakfast? You're allowing us, allowing our kids to go in cohorts to get breakfast. How are we going to do that between a quarter to seven and, you know, break 7:00 a.m. in 12 hours? How are we going to do that? How are we going to, you know, how are we even going to get the word out to our entire campus that you're not allowed to leave your room tomorrow? Except for three times. That's, that's a pretty tall, tall order.
Wes, Wes, Warren?
I'm a little lost at this point. I, I understand what Steve is saying completely. President Minnis, excuse me, completely. Hold on one second.
Yeah, Jack, the other thing, one of the things I'm sure all three of you are wrestling with is how, my other, how did we get here? We're getting in a situation where, you know, non-elected officials are issuing orders that affect, you know, in this case, 2,000 people, and, and the livelihood of other people within, within the county, such as restaurants and other things. That's, I'm, I'm, I mean, I, I often wonder, how did we get here? How did, how did, how did this happen in, in the United States of America, you know?
You know, I don't know if the virus became necessary, and nobody told us what was going to happen. But I will tell you. Steve, I, there is a fairness that the government has to make, that I can't, I can't. And, you know, I've heard stories and I've seen pictures, I've seen things on my own, just by walking around town. So every student certainly has a, a, completely supporting what you're trying to accomplish. I don't have any doubt, 100% with that, so.
Mr. Minnis, I agree completely because with your sentiment on the NEK multi-county health is basically hired to be our public health officer. And I've had many questions since the pandemic started about how there, the perspective, I think the original intent was to always have the county commissioners be the Board of Health. Because then they are advised by the health officer and advised by community leaders and advised and make an informed decision. As the health officer is basically got one job, and that is to protect health. That position is 100% what she should be doing. I'm not saying it's, I mean, she's doing exactly what she's hired for. But the Board of Health should maybe reflect more community positions than just the immediate physical health. And I'm on that NEK multi-county health board, which basically just hires the, the people that become the health officers. But we haven't met since the pandemic started, so.
We did.
You say, okay, so we had lots of discussion with the commission throughout this whole thing. The comment on elected officials. Hopefully, none of my bosses take this wrong, but I could be elected to a commissioner tomorrow. But I am a doctor. I'm still not a medical professional, so in this situation, you are elected not. If you don't have the expertise like Dr. Bonnie Tackett does or like Laurie does, when it comes to the medical field, being elected or not does not make you right or wrong. So after discussing with the panel to put all this together, we are willing to move this to Thursday or Friday morning at 12:01 a.m. We will reword the data. We will specify in there that they are able to go to church, because we never said they couldn't, but people question that. And we will reissue the order. We will talk to B C tomorrow and make sure that we can work everything out to, to make it to where they can make this happen. We will then post signs on the dorms and on the campus specifying that they're under quarantine. We will also talk with the commission tomorrow. Is there any other questions?
Will there be a, a two-week date on it?
So the reason there's not a two-week date on it, because if the day 14 is, in the day 16, it would be. Or the fact that it could be over prior, that's why there wasn't a date put on there. The plan was to work with B C on a daily basis to go through this, like that has been happening already. That is why there wasn't a date on there.
Wes, remind me again, what, what you're, what's the, when did it go into effect?
The new plan that we will work on tomorrow will go into effect at 12:01 a.m. on Friday.
Okay, so Friday.
Wes, Steve, can I just ask a question? I think for communicating it out to our students, a date would be very important for them to have something to look forward to. If they're in quarantine, they might think, okay, we can do this. We can do this for two weeks. I would rather have a date and reevaluate it, because if you have no date, they may just go home and say, I'm not going to do this. So it may help us enforce it or help us give students hope that they're going to get out in two weeks. Because quarantine for 14 days is a long time in a dorm room. So I think for their mental health, just even their thought process, it would help us to be able to communicate it out if we could say that, but that's just experience.
I do agree with the mental health aspect and for them to know that there is an end in sight. I would have to ask Mr. Henderson if we can put in there, maybe this is a 14-day quarantine, and we will reevaluate after the 14 days. But not put a specific date on there, just that this is going to be a 14-day quarantine because it's an incubation period.
I mean, it looks to me like the, the limitation is not to exceed 30 days, but the so, yeah, I don't, I don't see why you couldn't do that. I guess I've got more statutes to read, but I don't see why you couldn't do that.
Okay, okay.
I would just appreciate us communicating it out and giving them hope and, and help pulling the campus together.
Yep, absolutely.
There's probably a million of these nitpicky things, but, so we have nurses that need nursing students that need so many clinical hours in order to be able to take the N-Clux and, and et cetera. Student teachers as well. I'm just worried about folks like that.
We can discuss all of that tomorrow. We'll set up a meeting.
All right.
Sorry, I don't care. I have a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion to adjourn.
One second.
Is there any further discussion? I, I, I'm just ready to vote. I, I, this is ridiculous.
Thank you, everyone.